Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is a meeting of Froome Town Council. I'm Andy Jones and I'll be chairing this evening's meeting. Just to remind everybody, we have got a few people in the room and a few more online. For those in the room, a little housekeeping, the emergency exit is wide open this evening to let some air through. In the rear corner here, the assembly point is the far side of the car park. Toilets are at the end of the corridor on the right and there's an accessible toilet to the right of the lift. I would say help yourself to a cup of tea, but we ain't got none, so stick with the water. Tonight, Paul Wood Clark, Laura, Sarah, Becca and Rachel are around in various guises to manage minutes, question boards, participant settings and IT generally. The meeting is being recorded, as you heard, and will be made available on our YouTube channel. For those councillors attending via Zoom, please use the yellow hand and for other people on Zoom, please use the Q and A ball. So first up on the agenda is apologies for absence, Paul.
Yes, we have 10 apologies for absence from Tracy Ashford, Sarah Butler, Philip Campania, Carla Colinett, Anita Collier, Anne Hills, Polly Lamb, Lisa Merriweather, Ben Still and Mel Usher. And that means we are not quorit this evening.
Okay, so because we're not quorit, we're not actually going to be able to vote on anything that's on the agenda. We'll still press on with most of the agenda meeting, most of the agenda business, but we won't be able actually to approve the minutes of the last meeting or to approve the recommendation at item four. But I think there's nothing to stop us as we are here progressing with what we have got. Do we have any declaration of interests? No? Okay, so I'm not going to go for the approval of the minutes, but there are a few actions arising from them. So maybe if we go through them sort of page by page, as we've got a little bit of time this evening. I don't think there was anything arising from the Froome College one. Fiona's still liaising about taking that forward. Under questions from the public and councillors, Julian Quail raised the point about dog mess and various challenges we're facing with that. I know Rachel's online and can perhaps give us a bit of an update.
Yes, good evening, Andy. Just to say that we've given it all some thought. We are going to start a social media campaign from August the 1st, but that's going to be combined with a stencil and chalk campaign. So there will be physical reminders around the town, which will just say, clean it up with a little picture of a dog with a little bit of poo, just to be a bit of a talking point. It will be done with chalk spray, so please don't worry that it's going to be there forever. It will quickly disappear, but we may also do a bit of interaction with the public and ask them if they'd like a chalk spray in their street. We'll get out and about and try and do some of those in the places where people feel that they need it the most. So, you know, thank you for inspiring that campaign.
Thank you very much. Anybody any questions or comments on that? Okay, and then in that same item, there was the discussion around overgrown vegetation. And I know councillor Anita Collier has had quite a campaign going to gather information about the hotspots and got quite a reasonably positive response back from the people responsible. I don't know if anybody's got any details on that.
Just to sort of, I think you sort of marked down what a nice mini campaign it was for Anita to do. I wrote to the parking people, sorry, the street cleansing people and they came back saying, well, we need to know exactly where. So Anita went out on her networks and got back quite a long list that was itemized and responded to by the parking people, parking people. What are we talking about? The highways maintenance people. And there are some things that they are able to do, some things are on private ground that they're not able to do, but it resulted in some action, which is great. The other thing that Julian Quail asked about, Andy, was whether the Chamber of Commerce could be instructed, instructed, encouraged to get their members to sort of clean up their bit of the street outside. And Pizza Wheelhouse is having a meeting with the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce about this next week. So hopefully that will progress as well.
Okay, thank you. Nick?
Just a point on the action that Adam, not Matthew Boydun took for me regarding overgrown vegetation, similar subject. Half of the route was done by somebody from Somerset Council and Adam did the rest himself on the morning of the trial. It was great. So many thanks to him.
Right, thank you. Okay, I don't think there was anything on the rest of those that we needed to comment on, Paul.
Yeah, I don't think so.
You aware of anything? So we'll roll those over and vote on them at the next quorit meeting. Okay, I'll move on to item two, which is questions and comments from the public and councillors. Shall we, I know we've got a group here who want to talk about the parking situation in Froome. So maybe we'll kick off with that and I'll come to Jill afterwards.
Is this on? If you switch it on.
It is on, but it's not working.
It will work, it just takes a minute to.
Does this work? Yes. Shall I kick off? Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Rifka Fine and I'm a resident of Nunny Road. It's my first time here with the Froome Neighbourhood Parking Group, but I have been involved behind the scenes, often on, ever since December 2019. I was the resident in Nunny Road that organised the petition against the TRO amendment at that time, in a frantic period just before Christmas, where we got 65 signatures in a period of four days. Just by way of background professionally, I've worked as a childhood landscape planner for the last 20 years. So I've got a bit of an eye for due process and procedure. 30 years ago, I was teaching undergraduate statistics at the University of Oxford. So I've also got an eye for numbers, biases in the way data is collected and the way data is presented. I can't help myself, I just notice it. So Beverley Shackleton-Jones and Rob Ashford, who aren't here, have done amazing work, sterling work in just taking apart the process to date and taking Somerset County Council to task on what has happened. And I believe you have been emailing documents which give a lot of the details of that. So I don't want to dive into any of that tonight. Instead, I'd like to take a step kind of back and look at the whole narrative arc from when this started and where we are now at the end of the consultation process. So when Somerset County Council went out to consult with not just Somerset Road and Weymouth Road, but the adjacent roads, in that very first consultation at that scale, they did not get the response rate, which would give them the mandate to move forward with the consultation. However, they pushed on regardless and that sows the seed for where we are now. Because if you look at what we obtained for the latest consultation that brings about the mandate for Somerset Council to make the scheme permanent, if you look through the figures, they have fudged them. So on the first page of that document, you will find the total number of houses on Somerset Road listed as 62. So 62 houses gave the mandate at that point, which was the second round of consultation at that scale, to move forward. However, in coming to the end of this temporary period and the consultation that was undertaken at that point, the number of houses consulted on Weymouth Road is listed as only 48, which is a drop of 14 houses, which is 23%. Now, this is significant for two reasons. First of all, if you include all of the 62 houses on Weymouth Road and magically none of them have disappeared, we've been out and counted them, there are still 62 houses on that road. If you include all 62 houses, they do not have the response rate required according to their own criteria to make the scheme permanent, unless they choose to steamroll it through. The other part of this is just to do with due process and the democratic process. Because what they have done is the equivalent of the UK government taking a referendum to leave the EU and taking their mandate from the whole UK population. And then this is what 23% represents in that big scale, that subsequent of going back and saying, it was only temporary. I'll be going to make it permanent four years later. And they discount the votes of Wales, Northern Ireland, Scotland and the whole of the South West, including Bristol, Wiltshire and Gloucestershire, which I think you agree is not particularly democratic. So I'll just leave you with that and take a further step back, because we shouldn't be surprised. In this very room, Steve Deacon, in one of the face-to-face consultation events for the wider area around Somerset and Weymouth Road and Weymouth Road, he was asked the question, is there an instance anywhere in the UK where a residence parking scheme has been brought forward on a temporary trial basis and then been revoked and kind of rolled back? And his answer to that was no. So we asked the question of the independent councillors of Froome as to what action they might be, have the appetite to take, given that this is a scheme that has been rolled out and this kind of steamrolled through from a higher level of government and then shoehorned into our local community in a way that has been undemocratic, goes against the grain of the common good and has created a huge amount of issues for the surrounding streets. And if Froome Town Council were to take action and be successful, they would be the first council in the UK to successfully do so, which I think would add quite nicely to the fantastic track record Froome Town Council has in taking precedence in the UK.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mark Dorrington, can I ask you to respond on that? You've been across this issue for a long time.
Yeah, since I was elected in May 2018, the first job that arrived on my desk the day after was organise a meeting about car parking in Weymouth Road. And I did. And we held a public meeting here, at which Steve Deacon made one of his rare appearances. And that meeting, he promised we would have a, it would go ahead, the consultation would go ahead, but we would have a townwide consultation on parking across the town. So we didn't have displacement and people being moved into different streets. That's never happened. And I see from the report from the customer experience officer in reply to your complaint that they have no record of this offer ever being made, which I'm very surprised at, because we have all recorded here. Yes, it's not a, this report that we've been looking at is probably the worst written report I've seen in ages. It's a classic example of a conclusion and then justification for it being written afterwards. It was never going to, it was doomed to success. It was never going to be overturned. I asked that question that you mentioned, is there any chance it's being overturned? And he says, it's never happened in England as far as he knows. So it wasn't going to happen. It's purely lip service and it's been so annoying about the whole thing. It's really funny, the justification, not funny, it's not funny, the justification for it carrying on is everybody responded in Weymouth Road wants it. The neighbouring streets didn't respond in sufficient evidence not to have it. And so that was obviously purely done on the paper replies that they received. So this paper is four pages long when printed out. There are further eight double-sided pages of emails from other people saying, we don't want it. So I really don't see how that can't be taken into account. If it's not necessarily on the form that was issued by Somerset Council, I guess 90% of these responses they've received by email are against it and give justification why it shouldn't happen. So I still, the complaint is still going on. I understand that you've raised with the Ombudsman. And I thank Beverley for the forensic dissection of this report, which has really helped, because I don't get into detail like that, but that's been very helpful.
Do you need some microphone?
You probably need to speak into a microphone.
Right, so that dissection of their report, which was appalling in my mind, I sent as a complaint to the Information Commissioners' Office because they weren't responding to my freedom of information request. And I think they only cobbled this together to stop us asking, because they had to provide something. Anyway, the Information Commissioners' Office has come back to me and said that, because they've come back, even if it's not what we wanted, they fulfilled their duty because they've come back to us. So that's, so our complaint is still open with the Ombudsman now.
For that, that's useful and I think you should pursue it because it's been so badly done. With regard to going forward, I don't know what else we can do. I will ask Paul to write to Somerset Council to again push for this townwide review of parking that we've been promised since 2018, which has never happened. I mean, the report that you've had back from the experience officer says, sorry, we didn't get back to you. And it was COVID and it was change of administration and it was, I don't know what. It went on and on and nothing's happened. I would like to think that with devolution of assets to the town from Somerset that we would get the car parks and be able to charge our own fees and hours and all the rest of it. I don't think that will happen because it's such an asset for the council, the Somerset Council, which needs as much revenue as it can possibly get. So I think it's probably the last thing we'll get from them. But I would like to see that, so we can set our own hours and free parking for a couple of hours or whatever like that. But if you can come up with any ideas of how we can pursue this further, then please contact me. I seem to have ended up with running this. So please contact me and we'll see what we can do to push that forward.
I just wanted to pick up on that, like what we can do going forward, because I sort of agree with you. It feels like this, I mean, this issue's been rumbling on for so long now. And Mark's done an amazing job of sort of, you know, gathering everyone's sort of complaints and thoughts on it and sending it through. And Paul, I know that you've also sort of intervened there, things there as well. I sort of feel a bit like we're not getting anywhere. So what is the next step? I mean, this is in Martin Dimmery's and Mick Dunksward, right? Have they sort of got involved? And if not, can we bring them in more? And do we need to also maybe have a meeting with Adam Boydun, given that it's a Lib Dem? Do we need to escalate this up? Because it just feels like it's going on and on, you know, and I don't mean that to you, you must feel the same way. But this is sort of rumbling on and on. We must just be able to do something that just gets this resolved. Because it's not a good use of anyone's, you know, time and energy and.
Could I just say, Martin has sort of helped in a way, but he was busy campaigning to be an MP. So we've not heard anything from Martin and he has sort of been on the fence. Like at the last meeting, he said he couldn't come down on either side. And I just really feel that for 21 houses to cause this much disruption to the whole town, to the park users, to everyone, that is just wrong. It's not democratic. That's how I feel.
I think the main point here is it's a process now that feels, as you've sort of explained, is just, you know, if the decision had come about in a process that we could all stand behind and that sort of felt like it was robust and I don't think we would be having, I think it would be a different thing, but it hasn't. We just need to do something and it's.
I think Martin has tried his best, has become completely against a brick wall. Steve Deacon won't speak to us as a town council, he'll only speak to the county councillors or Somerset councillors. And now he won't even speak to them. Well, this is what we probably need to do is write to, I think we have done this before, written to his boss before or.
Yeah, we did on school, well, school streets, we intervened on last, so we've got all the contacts there.
I think we need to, there's this two kind of set, kind of related, but two separate issues, I think, aren't there? There's the note at the end of Steve Deacon's report saying, I hope to bring forward a parking strategy for Froome at some point in the future. And Mark's asked me to write to the chief, I suggest just the chief executive about that, which of course, the other thing is, is we're talking about what, as Fiona says, what else we can do and specifically about this scheme. I think that was your question, Rifka, wasn't it? And if councillors want me to, I can, in the same letter, if you like, respond to Steve's note. But I need some ammunition to go, this is where we're really concerned about this, if that's what people want me to do.
I have an inherent fear of raising two topics in the same letter on the basis that you tend to get one answer to one question and the other one gets ignored. So it might make sense to fire off two separate tirades, but I think.
May I, may I, sorry to interrupt you, but may I make one quick suggestion? If we went back to the future, in 1975, it was up until 1975 that Froome was actually in charge of its own management of parking and then that changed. Now, if this is all about money, which I'm assuming it is, which is why they want, Somerset County Council wants to keep control of this, then why don't we as councillors, well, the councillors who pride themselves in independence and you've clearly shown that you can get things done in the past and you've done some very great things for this town, if you could manage the parking yourselves and let Somerset County Council have the money, then we might be in a better state. Because at least we're the people that actually deal with the issues of parking. We can see it every day and not somebody who's based in Taunton. Doesn't make sense.
I think that's, you know, I think that's a good idea. Max raised that at a meeting we had not long ago. Sorry, Max, where he had an experience with, another council had done that, where if a council makes X from parking, if we give them X, then we can, it's a win-win for them. They don't have to manage the parking. We can set the hours, we can set the fees, they still get their money. I think that is a very sensible way forward and it would be worth exploring. And I don't know who we speak to about that during our devolution. Max has got his hand up, perhaps you can answer.
I think Adam is online as well, Adam Boydun, and wants to speak. So maybe we can hear from Adam first and then.
I've just asked him if he wants to talk, so I will allow him to talk on here, but it's.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks, Adam.
All right, well, yes. Well, there seems to be three issues here now. The Weymouth Road parking zone and complaints about that.
I think you've muted yourself again, Adam.
Froome Town.
We're not getting your audio. Adam, do you want to start again? Because we're not getting your audio through properly.
Okay, do you want to email me? I can help with some of that perhaps.
Who, who are we asking Bev's group to email you? The Froome Neighbourhood Parking Group will email you and follow up on that one. But meanwhile, we'll press on with the conversation.
Yes, okay, because of course it's Martin and Mick's division, Froome West. But if there's a wider problem, then I'll need to get involved in that, because it's my group running the council. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have got a statement from Martin Dimmery as well and then I'll come to Nick and, oh, and Max is online, thanks.
Martin emailed yesterday saying that he wouldn't be able to be here tomorrow. And he says, I've done everything I possibly can to support this group and achieved significant concessions in opening up the parking spaces at the bottom of Weymouth Road. And I have been fully engaged with, so I'm just playing what Martin has said.
I'll come to you in a second, but I've got Max and then Nick and then I'll come back on that. Max, you there?
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify something really. So I mean, I think the conversations that Mark and I have had and other members of the town council group have had has really been about potential control of the market yard car park in the context of a devolution deal affecting the town centre. I don't think we've ever proposed to take over parking and particularly parking enforcement Froome wide. I think that would be an entirely different thing and I think the likelihood of Somerset agreeing to that is pretty much next to nothing. So I understand the ambition, but I kind of think that we would be on hiding to nothing. Plus, I'm not, I'm not quite sure that we want to get involved in enforcement and parking policy. I think what's missing here is any proper conversation, not just about parking, but about transport, car use, you know, a proper mobility strategy for Froome is kind of what we need. It encompasses these issues. Part of the issue here is trying to kind of deal with it bit by bit and piece by piece. And what, you know, what people are rightly saying is if you kind of create a, you know, residence parking zone somewhere and it creates problems elsewhere, it's like we need a proper holistic strategy and solution and not just to do things in bits. And I think that's the problem that with Somerset's approach, with Steve Deacon's approach, with Somerset's approach overall, is that they're just responding to piecemeal pieces of lobbying etcetera and not really looking holistically at what we need to do in Froome. And that's, I think, where we need to go. I appreciate that probably doesn't help us tonight, but I'm with the issue in front of us. But I think that's where we need to go.
Okay, Nick?
Yeah, I hear what Max says, but I also think this is an example at a ward level where something has been planned, taken place and not followed the process that was agreed statistically wrong, democratically doesn't seem very fair. And it would seem to me, no one would be happy to wait for the outcome of what we might be planning post sort of devolution. And this should be something I think at ward and county council level for that ward should work with this group, an active group who've got concerns. And, you know, it's not my ward, but having looked at it and read the papers and been part of the conversation going on since I've been a councillor, it seems kind of grossly unfair and actually the wrong street to have done this, introduce this in. And so surely we should be able to support a kind of strong pushback and say, hang on a minute, let's do this fairly and let's use our newly elected Lib Dem MP as well to support this, I think.
Gentlemen.
I'd like to go back a bit and just remind the room that although Martin Dimmery has sort of claimed some credit for concessions to the scheme, we don't know what the concessions are. Somerset Council has said vaguely that they'll take up some of the double yellow lines in Weymouth Road. They'll release some of the resident parking bay back to general use, but completely vague with no actual specific numbers given to us. So I'd rather reject that as any sort of concession at all. The basic point is, I think as Rifka and Bev have made the point, the whole scheme, ab initio, should, is basically void for misuse of Somerset's powers. So I don't want to see anyone, town council, any of us, having to negotiate any further with Somerset Council or Mr Deacon and his colleagues on the basis the scheme is still afoot and accept grateful crumbs off the table that they call concessions. We regard the scheme as unlawful and we hope the Ombudsman supports us in that conjecture. And the other point where I'd have to disagree with Max is that although it isn't within the power of the town council at the moment to take control of matters relating to highways and parking, they did so up until 1975. And though it would require a change in national legislation, the Transport Act, the Highway Act, to allow the town council to be a highway authority, it can be done. And if Froome can lead the way, other smaller local authorities would happily fall in behind us. They had much the same problems, an overbearing and distant higher tier of local authority doing a job which is not competent to do. It's all about competence. I don't think that councillors and officials living 50 miles away really have the competence to decide what parking restrictions should be imposed in particularly side streets, which are totally beyond their knowledge and comprehension. It's obviously, it's self-evidently, a town council competence, or it should be. So I'd ask the legal officers and legal advisers of the town council to actually start spearheading with some sort of working party or study the legal implications of taking control of a limited number of highway and parking control factors that are, were within their competence and could very much be so again if they took the town with them and had the will to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiona.
I just wanted to agree with Nick and I completely agree with Max that sort of ultimately.
ultimately where we do need to go to is a mobility strategy. But I also think that our strategy in terms of this, and what Mark said, is like, sort of saying, our reply back on this specific issue is we need to have a townwide parking strategy from Somerset Council. I don't think that's working. I think, going back to your email, Paul, I think you just need to talk about Weymouth Road now, and I think we just need to be, I think we're sort of bringing in too many different things here, and there is a specific issue with Weymouth Road. So I would suggest or ask that you email specifically just about this issue, and we sort of come back to sort of the broader issue at a later stage. But I don't feel that the sort of conflating of these two things is helping us particularly at the moment. So I think we need to tease them apart and just try and focus on getting this resolved right now. And then whatever happens down the line, I completely agree, we need to think, yeah, cohesively, holistically, et cetera, but also let's just get this resolved because it's just, it's been going on for so long now.
Okay, I do need to bring this issue to a close. Mark, did you have any final thoughts? Maybe Paul, if you want to.
I think that's right. Is it best to wait until you have a result from the Ombudsman or whoever you're writing to before we get involved again and try and escalate it even further? Sort of sub judicy at the moment, almost.
I'm, I'm not sure of the exact date that the Ombudsman is due to come back, so I will check that and I will let you know. And then, yeah, if we could be in touch via email and go to take this forward.
That's the best way to forward is find out when the Ombudsman rules on this.
Yeah.
It could go in our favour.
Well, hopefully.
If it doesn't, then we can, I don't know, I don't think you can appeal an Ombudsman decision, but we can certainly use that as a lever to say this isn't right, and this is what we experiencing here.
Yes.
And that's, that's when we should probably get involved, and that's when we should write.
Yes, I mean, if they don't find in our favour, then I'm not sure where we go from there, but I guess we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Okay.
That seems fine. I wonder, just to keep the pressure on, to sort of take Nick and Fiona's point about going back to the chief exec of Somerset Council, so I'm suggesting putting words into your mouth here, so to slap me down, but the response we've had is very poor. We can, we can bolster the reasons why by talking to you and saying, you know, we urge you to revisit this decision. That keeps the momentum up or starts the momentum again. I don't know, I'm putting words into your mouth, so.
No, it seems to make sense.
Does that sound a sensible way forward? Because I, you know.
If the town councillors are willing to do that, I think that would be a great help, yeah.
Because I think otherwise it ends up in Steve Deakin's closed file and.
Yeah, we need to open that box again, don't we? Which is what you're trying to do by liaising with Somerset Council as well, with the ICO.
Yeah.
We can, there's no point in us, as I see at the moment, going, ulstering your ICO campaign. But there is an opportunity to keep the pressure up with Somerset Council.
Yeah, and I mean, and hopefully they will respond to the town councillors better than they've responded to us as just as citizens, you know, residents.
That may be true annoyingly.
Okay.
So CC and whichever is the lead councillor for this area, I don't know who it would be.
Lead council, Somerset Council area.
Yeah, the executive member for this area.
The executive.
Yeah, I don't know who it would be.
Was it Dawn, sorry?
Sorry, Richard Walkins is the lead for transport.
I wonder whether I can just liaise with Rifka to get some robust stats. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much for a sensible conversation around a very annoying topic. Feel free to cut out and get back to the football if you want to. We have got a couple of other people that have got questions while we're still in this piece, but I noticed Julian just joined us at the back, unfortunately, after we'd just done a summary of actions from last meeting, Julian. Maybe if I can ask Paul to summarise where we're at on that.
I was really disappointed you weren't here on time, Julian, because the first time in a long time. Rachel updated to say that there's a two-pronged attack on the dog poo in the parks. There'll be a, following your suggestion, a stencil approach around neighbourhoods and in the park, and also a social media campaign to encourage people to do that. And secondly, my colleague Peter Wheelhouse has a meeting arranged with the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce with a view to exploring how the Chamber of Commerce members may keep their front step cleaner.
Okay, thank you. So I've got Jill and then Lenka. Can you, microphone, please?
Thorny question of the Green Belt piece of land on the Singer site. I've kept Mark updated as much as I can, and today I've had a bigger update in the fact that Green Belt is based in Glasgow. And they will tell you in a recorded message when you ring that number, in the fact that they have all these wonderful areas all around England, Scotland and Wales, and they are well maintained. And I thought, no, in Froome, this is not well maintained. So apparently there's a branch that deals with the West Country, and it's based in Cardiff. Okay, well, we had a contractor down to clear this land on the 23rd, no, no, hang on, on the 3rd of October last year, first time in the whole of the 20 years since the site has been completed. And the area has been grown and the brambles have grown and no care, but, you know, the residents have got fed up with it. So I took it on myself to get hold of some of these people to try and make them have some pride in the Barrett-Perciman development in the middle of Froome. Well, a contractor, I've been badgering them, and a contractor came on the 28th of June, and they are linked to, now I've got it here, IPM Facilities and Landscape Maintenance, and they are based in Borden in Hampshire. Right, okay, I've got their phone number, and I am continually ringing them, so they're going to get fed up with me by the time, hopefully, it goes on. But they have told me that they are contracted to clear that land once a month from April to September. Well, they have been in June, and that's the first time they have been. So when I contacted them and spoke to them today, they said, okay, they are definitely booked for July and August, right? So hopefully they will keep to their, keep to the arrangement. But in the meantime, I was told today by the chap called John, and Jason Bartlett would like to come and visit the site. And I thought, hooray, yes, someone is going to come, and I will inform Mark and tell, and find out when he comes. It won't be now until probably August. But he's going to come to Froome, he's going to come and see me, and I said, well, I shall refer to our councillor who's interested in this area as well, and then hopefully something will be done. Because they come for one day, this contractor, on the both occasions, October and June, they just do it in one day. Well, no way can they complete clearing the site. They can cut it back and scoop up the long brambles and shove it in their van and off they go, but the place is still a mess, and it needs a much longer time to clear the area and to tidy it up. So there we are. That's up to date from today. And hopefully a site visit will happen because that will be really good. They can see then what a, you know, shameful piece of area. It's not very big, for goodness sake, half of Froome don't even know about it. But us residents feel very upset that it's been left to be so neglected. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jo. Okay, Lenka.
Hi, yeah, I would like to bring up the issue of the football club, in particular the CBS, and to sort of get an update review of what's happening with that. For, it started in 2022, wasn't it? We started having meetings, and so Froome Town Council has given a lot of money to that project to become a community asset. And so recently, we, Fairfreem, we have Sunday lunches, as you've heard at a previous meeting, where the independent market has supported our car parking there. So we booked up for Sunday lunches for the whole of this year. The last, in June, there was a big mix-up with our booking, and the club was opened up an hour later. So an hour late, you can imagine children, a lot of children with additional needs, being an hour late for their lunch didn't go down too well. Then I followed up after that, because I was a bit concerned, with copy of the email with all our bookings. And subsequently, basically, they told us we can't use it anymore due to resources. I've gone back to them to clarify, what resources do you mean? Because we've provided an oven, all the crockery, we could open up the club ourselves, we could get our own catering delivered to site. Again, it's come back with lack of resources. I believe there's some town councillors who actually left the board. I think there's a lot of going on, so I'd like some clarity about what's happening up there. Also, there's been no communication. So personally, I paid membership, £30 a year, Fairfreem paid membership. I understand that nobody, not received any emails at all regarding our membership to meetings. You know, it's supposed to be a community asset. So I approached them, they didn't approach me at Fairfreem. I offered solutions, so the board didn't approach us with any solutions. So, yeah, I would like to know what is going on up there, basically, because that money is obviously taxpayers' money that was put into that project. So very concerned.
Thank you. Any way to add to that?
The town council isn't a board director of the CBS. We've had some involvement over the last year and tried to push them along in the right direction, but we're not a board member, so we have no control over what the CBS does. What I have said to the board recently is that we'll be reviewing our lease with them. It's now getting up for a year old, and we'll be looking at that from the town council's role as landlord of the CBS as the tenant, and we'll be looking at that. So their day-to-day operations, we don't have anything to do with. I was at the one board meeting recently to help them get back on track, because they have had some problems populating the board, and I helped them solve that problem, and now they're back as an entity in themselves. And their relations with Fairfreem and others aren't really directly anything to do with us, but we hear what you're saying. And one of the things that I've asked, that is done, is that we is, we, I asked myself really, what we're doing is just reviewing that lease with them to make sure their obligations are in place.
Verify what their obligations are.
I think I can share the lease with you. I would need to check to make sure it's not a confidential document. I don't know for sure, but if it's not confidential, I can certainly make that lease available to you.
There is an obligation, I mean, to provide community benefit, though, I'm fairly certain as part of the lease. So that is sort of baked into it. I just wanted to say thank you for coming along and sharing that, and also to say that I have heard from other parties as well, from other people in the town, who are also feeling sort of, yeah, who have had sort of dealings with the football club and the CBS, that, you know, things are not quite right. And we're sort of, I know that we're aware of it, but it is, it is really worrying, given how much we invested as a town council, £400,000 or something close to. And I completely hear what you say about the, you know, we don't have control, and it's, I had to say, I really, yeah, I really, it is really worrying, and I think that we need to look at our relationship if we don't have control over it, but having spent all this money, and I'm not sort of blaming anyone, I think there are lessons to be learnt going forward, especially as we go into devolution, and we need to make sure that we learn those lessons, and what's worked and what hasn't. And maybe can I ask all councillors to get an update email on the football club regularly, maybe? Is that possible? Sort of a monthly update, so that we're sort of, yeah, so we sort of have a bit more of a sense of what's going on?
Yeah, I mean, as you know, I mean, I'm involved in the community, I do what I can, you know, my brother is up there doing all the recycling up there for them. I've offered, I spoke to Peter Wheelhouse, I said I would speak to the Rotary about helping to renovate the building, because obviously there's a lack of funds. So it just feels like, this is just, what are we supposed to do now to find another venue? That should be, we're a charity partner of the football club up there, so it's just really disappointing.
And when we bought it, it was for organisations like Fairfreem, that was a big part of why we bought it and why we agreed to spend the money. So it is really disheartening, I think, to sort of hear that. And I'm, yeah, I'm just really sorry that that's.
Could we ask the board of the Community Benefits Society to come to a meeting and explain what's happening? Can we invite them to come here?
Of course I can, yeah. And the point Fiona made about sort of lessons learned about setting up the CBS and supporting it are very well made.
Okay, thanks for that. Did anybody in the room have any other questions they want to raise? Nick?
Yes, another freehold type matter, because it's to do with allotments. I'm frequently asked by constituents about the waiting list to get an allotment in Froome. I understand there are more people waiting for an allotment than actually have them. I think we all agree, they're brilliant, all kind of in favour of allotments, I think they're great. But as the freeholders, we surely have the right to understand a bit more, or I would like to know a bit more about how they operate. I know that, I'd like to know their selection process, who gets allotments, how that works. I know that, I think the fees for the allotments in the town seem to be very low compared with a lot of others, where I've spoken to people who have them. And I think it would be really useful to have a process where we could maybe review and understand how they are managed, how they are allocated. I mean, the idea that people who have, already have their own garden, and then also have one or sometimes two allotments, I understand some families have two allotments, seems to be a bit unfair, and it would be good to know how that works. And if we could get a greater income from the allotments by either increasing the number of allotments or increasing fees, we could perhaps then get to a position where we could get more allotments, or we could have someone paid to manage them for a couple of days a week.
Thanks for raising that, Nick. Fiona, I know you're close to what's going on there.
I was out at my allotment this afternoon, and my hands still smell of tomatoes, it's lovely. So, yeah, to explain a little bit about how it works, you sort of said, so all of our allotments, we have, you know, there's 350 odd people on the waiting list from a couple of months ago, and we have between 250 and 300 allotments. There has been, at my site, and I think at another couple of sites, a bit of a move to cut allotments in half so that there are sort of more allotments available. I will say, I have an allotment at Mewell Jones, and I'm also on the committee of the FAA. So all our allotments are managed by the Froome Allotment Association, which is completely self-sufficient. And I think we should be very grateful to them as volunteers for having done it and generally doing an amazing job at managing it. And it is completely separate. We have a contract between FTC and Froome Allotment Association that I did flag to Rob last year, we do need to look at, because it is not very clear on some of the details. I think on Mewell Jones, like, the Rangers are responsible for the north and the west boundary, but not the, not the other boundaries, and it just doesn't make sense. But we've also had a changeover, we had a chair, Philip, who left after 16 months, and he's just been replaced, and he was replaced around the same time as Rob broke his leg, so it hasn't sort of, they haven't, I don't think they've had a chance to meet up, but we will arrange that meeting. I mean, the main thing is we, you know, they are self-sufficient, I will say that, so they have, you know, they pay for, you know, they cover all their own costs. Rob has been amazing. We've also done a lot of work on repairing the relationship between the Froome Allotment Association, Froome Town Council, it was, there was a bit of historic tension there, and it has sort of, I think, hopefully got a bit better recently. But we need more allotments. That's the, that's what it boils down to, is there's just not enough for the demand. I did manage to find some money to buy some, but it's getting hold of the land. But maybe we can, in devolution, if there are bits of land that would be appropriate for allotments, look at that, and then work with the Allotment Association on it. But the rent is set by. But the rent is set by the committee and is, I think, sort of a big increase would need to be voted on by the committee, so it is sort of very self-sufficient. So I'm sort of on the, I'm on the committee, but it's not that we don't, and I think we should be careful what we wish for there because they do actually take all of that headache away from us and manage it entirely self-sufficiently and do a very good job of it. So I think we should be careful about getting more involved, personally.
I'm not suggesting we get more involved, but we are the freeholders, it's a community asset, it's, it's part, it's the, one of, an asset for the town. And I think there should be a process where we could all explain to constituents, this is how it works and it, to some it feels like it's a bit of an old boys' club, that it's managed internally, you'll never get on there unless you know someone, they keep the rents very low because they're all, have allotments, so why would they put their rents up? So those kind of issues. I'm sure it's run really well, I'm not in any way criticising it, it'd just be good to have a light shone on it so we can understand it better and explain it.
So I'm happy to invite Richard, the new Chair, to come to, I think it's Nick? I think so. I'm having a slight panic that it's not, to come to a future council meeting, or maybe Paul can, but I can, if he CCs me in, to explain a bit more. But I will say that there's always a lot of discussion about the waiting list. It is held by a couple of people and it is very much done on who is, you know, who is top and longest and the process of how people get allotments is done very fairly. You know, sort of the waiting list manager calls up the first person on it and then if he gives them sort of 40 hours and they don't respond, he goes to the next person, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, down the list. And it is all done, I think, very fairly. But the, yeah, like sort of the, especially at my allotment, Mewell Jones, which is the newest one, the demographics have changed considerably and it is, there's a lot more younger people, a lot more families. I do think our allotment's an amazing asset.
And I suggest, given that this guy's relatively new into post, we might want to give him a month or two to get his feet under the table.
He was elected in March, March, April, April, so, yeah, but I, I maybe sort of September, October and also very busy this time of year, but this year I was, I had already invited Philip, then he left, so I was sort of working on that. And I was going to bring in the contract to look at as well as part of that, but that might be something better for the oversight committee.
Okay, thanks.
So what do you want me to do?
Yeah, and CC, if you CC.
Okay.
Yeah, I can give him, I do, you have his email.
Please do. Okay, so we've agreed we'll invite the Chair of the Allotments Committee to the next council meeting and we'll also follow up on Lenka's conversation.
Can I just clarify one thing? We, we're not, we weren't using the club for free, we're paying £25 an hour, just wanted to make sure you've got that.
Thank you. Okay, unless anybody else has anything else for questions, let's move on to item number three, Steve Tanner, an update on upcoming major planning applications within Froom.
Thanks. Do you want me to go up there or somewhere? Yeah. I'm guessing you've seen Jane's brief report, there's not a huge amount to add from that. We thought that the Selwood Garden Community application was going to go to tomorrow's planning board. We've now been told that that won't happen, we think it will probably go to September or October. Main reasons, there was two outstanding statutory consultees, one was Natural England and the other one was National Highways. I think the Natural England, one has been dealt with, but the National Highways, the improvements to the A36 roundabouts hasn't. So that will probably go to September, October's meeting, we think. Jane and I did have a meeting with the case officer last week, went through our issues. He was very, he listened a lot, took a lot of notes. I mean, it was a very, very positive meeting and we've agreed to meet again in a few weeks' time when both Jane and him are back from holiday, separate holidays. So that's, that's sort of the update on, on Selwood Garden Community. Obviously the comments from the new Chancellor are interesting regarding housing targets on that one. On Saxon Bow, we've been told that the Somerset Council Executive Committee will be meeting by the end of this month. And we think the meeting will be here in the town hall, that's what we've heard unofficially. Again, I did speak to one of the case officers on that this week and, and he said what we had heard was reasonably correct, but it hasn't been confirmed as yet. So we're waiting for that to be confirmed.
Do you know if that will be a public meeting?
We know, we don't know anything about that meeting at the moment. All we know is that it's a meeting of the Somerset Council's Executive Committee. So as soon as we will, we know about that, obviously we'll, we'll do something about it.
And if it ain't public, there's not really much point them coming here to hold it, but...
Yeah, although if they're holding it here in the chamber, you can't get that many members of public here by the time you get all the committee in, so.
Steve, Shane.
It won't be public, it's an executive meeting, every Somerset meeting is open to the public and I've really pushed them to meet here and, yeah, it will be public.
Thanks.
Unless there's, they've been passed on for another judicial review, then it should happen on the 31st of July, which, but again, that's just pencilled in and it's not, that was the original idea was to have it before the August holidays. So unless something else pops up and they look into the cheese and grain, but again, until they've got final, you know, confirmation, they won't make any of that public, so.
Okay.
And, yeah, will be public, yeah.
Thanks. Sorry, Steve, carry on.
We've heard the papers will be available from 23rd July. They will include a summary and assessment from both bids, but there won't be an officer recommendation because it's not a planning discussion at this point. And it will be for councillors to debate. That's about it.
Really? So do we know if FTC will have a voice at that meeting or is it just that we can go and listen to other people talk about the future of our town?
All the way down the line, we have been told since, since the unitary council came into being, we have been told that we will have a chance to put our views across.
Okay.
That's the line that they've been taking up until now, we've seen nothing to, to say that that's, that won't be the case.
Yes, Shane.
Yeah, so Adam Savery and Rebecca Jarman at Somerset Council are the funnels to which comments and information should go to. There's a company from Southampton called CBRE Limited who are going to produce the report. But, yeah, any information should go through Adam Savery and Rebecca Jarman, I think it is. And there is a lot of new information coming out recently, in particular the, the Bruton promoters who are taking Acorn to court, their particulars of claim have just been, well, I've requested it and got it, so if anybody would like to see that. There's some fairly startling stuff in there, I would say, including the fact that it looks very much like the Director of Acorn has been jailed in the past for mortgage fraud. I've asked Adam Savery and Rebecca Jarman to confirm with Acorn firstly whether that is the same John Scock and secondly whether they mentioned the fact that he had been jailed in their offer, because if they didn't, that would be, I think, a very improper thing not to mention.
So this report that CBRE are producing, is this a report that's going to go to the executive and on which the executive will base their decision?
I would imagine so, yeah.
The CBRE report is, they're going to look at both bids and comment on both bids and I guess highlight to the executive issues or non-issues that they see.
Any other comments on that from anybody in the room? All right. Thank you very much, Steve. Item four, we are going to have to roll over to the August meeting because we're not quor at tonight to vote on anything. So I think we're going to end up wrapped up for just after eight o'clock. Thank you all very much for your time this evening and hopefully we'll have a more productive meeting in August.